Let's reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 6:30 to discuss personnel matters. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the Constitution of the Republic, to the Constitution of this nation, to our individual, liberty and justice for all. Introductions. With us this evening, we have Jody Monroe, Dave Hurst, Judy Kehoe, Meredith Moriarty, Will O'Beir, Chris Meyer, Christine Beck, Jonathan Fishfine, Wendy Sampson, and myself, Holly Dellenbaugh. First order of business is to approve the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 18th, 2020 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
As you know, the Governor extended the school closure through April 15th. This is a very difficult time for our school and community. I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our staff who have done as much as possible to provide support to our students and families. Our teachers, supervisors, administrators have worked together to transform the classrooms into remote learning experiences. And although not ideal, we are continuing to provide instruction and support for our students. Our counseling staff who've been reaching out to families and students who are having difficulties during this time. Our food service staff who've been working every day to serve just about 500 meals. And our transportation staff who are delivering meals and supplies to families who are not able to get to the high school. Also to our tech staff who've been providing ongoing support to staff and families and just this past Monday helped to distribute almost 1,000 Chromebooks to... We are continuing with work in the areas that we can allow for contractors to work in a designated space and to remain in those areas. This is good news since it will allow us to stay on our timeline. It's also important in the completion of work and also for state aid purposes. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Mark Warford. He was, he is being awarded New York State Assistant Principal of the Year from the New York State School Administrators Association. The awards recognition has been pushed back. It was supposed to be this spring and it was moved to the fall. So we will be sure to give Mark the recognition he deserves when we all return to school. Thanks, and that's my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Jody at this time?
No, I just wanted to add real quick, echoing what she was saying, that the materials that we've been getting from teachers, it's just incredible how much effort that they put into trying to help provide an education to kids in this weird, weird circumstance. The materials that we got particularly this week were so organized and easy to follow and manageable. And so, you know, as a parent, I just wanted to thank them for all of the hard work they put in.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Board report. And I would echo Jody, all of your gratitude for all the district staff and faculty for all of their efforts. And again, especially this week, the instructional staff who really took it up another level with their online instruction. And I've seen it at all three building levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And I'm just, I'm really impressed at how hard everyone is working to, not just to provide some instruction, but to have a connection with the students. Because it is something that is very challenging for the students to lose that. And I really appreciate that. Just something else I wanted to mention, which is a positive, and I meant to mention it at our last meeting, and there was, we had a couple other things going on that I totally slipped my mind, is that before everything happened with COVID-19, we had a Regional Odyssey of the Mind tournament, and we had a number of Bethlehem teams that participated in the tournament and did really, really, really well. A lot of them went, did well enough that they were going to be moving on to the state competition, which unfortunately with the current circumstances was canceled, so those students were, are not able to go ahead and compete in the state tournament. But I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized for their efforts this year. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to add? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, item four, our presentation. Our presentation this evening is about our 2020-2021 budget.
And Brittany, if, can I present now? Okay.
Yes, you should be all set, sorry.
It's going, thank you. And can everybody see the slides?
I cannot.
No, not yet.
I cannot.
Oh, okay. I have to share this window. So am I sharing it with the Board of Ed, I'm presuming? I'm going to click that and hit Share, and then that should work. How about now? Can you see the presentation now?
No, we can see all of us again.
Okay.
You're sharing your Google screen and not your presentation screen.
Okay, I think we've got it now. Yes?
There we go.
All right. Thank you for your patience. My first time doing a budget presentation live. I, on my screen, cannot see any of you, so I'll rely on audio questions and comments if you have a question while we're presenting. So tonight, we in fact are not adopting our budget, given the delay in the state's timeline. But I do want to recap everything. We also, of course, had the state budget presented late in the day today, so I will be reviewing that information with you. And I too want to echo all of the comments about how the state of emergency has certainly helped reinforce how focused we are on the district mission. I feel like we've hit every one of these points in our mission over the last few weeks as we've been trying new things and trying to make sure that we continue our services for all of our students. I wanted to give you a quick recap of each of the changes first. All of these changes had been tentatively approved by the Board at our prior meeting. And I wanted to put them in a summary by area so that you can account for them when we show that we have in fact attained a balanced budget. For transportation, our changes were net zero in terms of the impact to the budget. And we had proposed that we reconfigure some of the staffing, where we would eliminate one of the supervisor positions and instead replace that with a routing specialist, which would help us as we're working towards routing more efficiently and also implementing the Start School Later initiative. And then also an increase in the hours for the account clerk position. But again, a net change of zero. For technology, we had an impact of $14,000 more in the program. And this too was a reconfiguration of staffing based on a retirement of a school monitor at the middle school. We wanted to convert that position instead into a help desk technician in order to respond to the increased use of the Chromebooks and all of the services and support that students needed for that. For the athletics program, we had approved the addition of the varsity girls golf team and then also a modified assistant swimming coach for a total of $11,000. For ONM, we had proposed to reduce the original $75,000 allotment for a district-wide furniture replacement program and drop that down to $50,000 with the $25,000 reduction. Our district-wide changes were to hire the communications specialist from BOSI's and increase that one day a week so that we get a full-time position for a net increase of $22,000 in the coming year. We were able to refine our fringe benefit estimates and also factor in savings on the differential of salaries from staff who are retiring and then bringing on new staff at a lower starting salary. So that reduction was $762,000. And then for the K-12 instructional program, based on changes in the sizes of each of the sections, we needed to add two elementary teachers, one at Hammagrail and one at Slingerlands. And then also provide some supports for the high school Excel program in various subject areas. And then we were able to reduce one of the teaching positions, a mathematics teacher, for a net increase of $193,000. For special ed, we had reconfigurations of staffing. We had a 1.0 increase for a K-5 teacher, offset almost completely with a .8 and a .1 reduction. And then we were also converting one of our school monitor, aids to students with disability titles, to a teacher assistant program for $17,000. And then also converting one of the CSC chairs to an assistant director position. So those net changes were $63,000. And that was it for the changes on the expenditure side. The other piece related to the tax cap, and at last, at the last meeting, we indicated that we were comfortable going with the calculated maximum allowable tax levy, which is 2.34% based on the state's formula for this. And that would yield $1,573,000 in additional revenue. When we apply all of those changes to our baseline budget that we had presented back in the beginning of February, you can see that we've attained our goal of getting to a balanced budget at $103,486,000. Our revenues are comprised of these four major elements. Now that we're approaching the 103,486 as our final number, the school tax increase later on in the presentation, I will give you some very preliminary rate impacts for the community, for residents of Bethlehem and New Scotland. I'll cover that in a few moments. And the state aid estimate is still at the original baseline number, but I did want to review for you some of the key changes in what was just approved today with the adoption of the state budget. So, foundation aid. There had been a proposed revision in how that was going to be treated. They had rolled close to $3 million in other aid items. BOSI's and some of the special ed items had been rolled up into the foundation aid number. That has been undone with the adoption of the budget. So all of those other aids, totaling about $3.1 million, are going to roll back down into the other aid item line. So it'll be much closer to the $4.1 million that we have in our current year's projection. The foundation aid number is being rolled back to last year's number. And that is about a $90,000 reduction from our current year levels. All of the other aid categories, transportation and building aid, were unchanged from the initial aid runs. So we are projected to be about $90,000 lower based on what was released today on the aid runs. But it is my recommendation that we keep it at the $29.1 million that we had initially proposed. We're very accustomed to having fluctuations in our state aid because they're expense-based. They go up and down. We're typically within about $200,000 of our budgeted number. So because of that, the $90,000 reduction that has been proposed could be absorbed within those other routine changes that we have. Certainly, the bigger question is what will we face in the coming year if the state gets into difficulties? We know that they will based on the increased costs that they have had to incur in fighting COVID-19 in their response. And with concerns about the economy, the Governor had indicated that he was prepared to roll back some of our aid levels if needed, which I think is likely. But again, we don't know what those amounts are at this time, so until we have more information, I don't think we should change those amounts. One of the things that I do want to highlight for you though that was on the aid runs is there was a pandemic adjustment where the state had pulled out approximately $150,000 out of our aid totals. However, they offset that with federal funding. The state is receiving money from the federal government as part of the CARES Act. So that amount that they had pulled from our aid totals in fact has been increased based on applying the federal funding there. We did receive word late today from ASBO that in reading the bill, the Governor explicitly included language that they might need to recoup that $150,000 at a later time. But again, even if they take the $150,000 coupled with the $90,000 on the financial, the foundation aid line item, that still is within that plus or minus $200,000 budget variance that we see from one year to the next. On our budgeted expenditures, applying all of those changes that I had reviewed at the beginning of the presentation, you can see what our adjusted totals are for our broad categories of expenditures. We're looking at a 2.64% increase in our expenditures. Looking at our fringe benefits, when we applied those changes, you'll note that we've actually had a budget-to-budget decrease in our health insurance and dental insurance lines of 1.37%. Our projected actual for the current year is actually closer to $12.9 million. So we will in fact have an increase in the health insurance, looking at this year's actual going to next year's budget. But we really benefited from our premium increases, even though we had about a 3.8% weighted average increase in our health insurance costs because of the recent settlement of That resulted in some very nice savings on the health insurance line, which is enabling us to lower our total budget-to-budget line item. The TRS rates are projected to stand at the 9.53%. We'll have to see what increases we get in later years, but we are hoping that because they use an averaging technique for setting those rates, that the impacts will be felt gradually as opposed to a sudden shift in those rates. And similarly for our employees' retirement system amounts. So the net change in our fringe benefits is up 1.61%. So of course, any year that we can be in the low single digits with this category of expenditures is very helpful for us. Our debt service payments are steady. There are no changes in these totals. And then lastly, if you look to the budget summary, breaking this out by area, you can see that in fact, the majority of our resources have been focused on trying to maintain a very strong academic program and providing all of the key supports that we need for our students. So now we come to the part where I break out my crystal ball and try to project for you where I think we will land financially for this current year and also for the next few years. There's certainly no question that we are at risk for heightened volatility, certainly an extended period of uncertainty. So for the projections, what I have done is presented a range of options just so that you can have a sense of what it is that we are looking at. So of course, in an ideal year, each year, we would exactly meet our revenues and our expenditures and we would break even. That of course never happens, but we usually are close. We're within typically $2 million or $3 million of our budget totals, which is roughly within a 2% to 3% range of our total budget, which is right where we should be. So if we were having a normal year, based on normal operations and school in session right on through, we would be looking at about a $3.1 million surplus. That is in combination of being about $485,000 ahead on our budgeted revenues and then being close to $2.6 million below on our expenditures. Because we're not having a normal year due to our closure, I tried to project what our operations would be if in fact, worst-case scenario, we ended up being closed through the end of this school year. Because we would not be incurring a number of different cost categories, things like substitute teaching, possibly exam grading, transportation costs, fuel costs, and things like that, we would grow this projected surplus up to closer to $4.3 million. I think this is a very good position for us to be in. We really should be trying to hold on to these surpluses because unquestionably with the challenges that we're going to be seeing both federally and at the state level, I think it's very likely that we might be revisiting some of the impacts that we felt with the last recession in '08, where we were experiencing reductions of anywhere between $2 or $4 million a year in our state aid amounts. I think it is important that we set the tax levy at that mettle because we don't want to forfeit that resource when we do need to be shoring up our finances. And of course, we do want to make sure that we maintain our good fiscal position. We've been structurally balanced for the last three years. This coming year was slated to be more of the same. But in order to maintain that health and to give us the flexibility to meet all of our program obligations, I think we need to retain these surpluses. I did want to review with you the different tools. For many Board members, especially some of our newer Board members, this may be the first time that you're going to be seeing some of these challenges. What we have tried to do is to boost up the reserves that we have available. In difficult times, we can use those reserves as a source of funding and we can, things, whether it's your teacher's retirement system pension reserve or ERS reserves, we can draw on those as funding sources, which kind of helps us mitigate our costs. We certainly may need to look at controlling staffing levels. Our first approach with that would be to perhaps use any attrition that we have to try to reduce costs. Worst-case scenario, if we had massive reductions in our aid, we might need to have some layoffs. But of course, we would try to avoid that if at all possible. Any discretionary expenditures would be eliminated when we need to react to losses in our revenues. Typically, the first thing that would go would be things like furniture and equipment line items. So if it looks like it's going to be a particularly difficult year, we would delay those expenditures that are included within this budget. And then if necessary, do not have those expenditures at all. We would just save the money within the budget. The last area where we have the ability to control our costs is with our debt service. We have, not in this coming year, but in the year following, '21-'22, close to $4 million in older debt service payments that will be satisfied. So that is going to drastically lower our expenditures if we don't fill it in with more debt service for other projects. Certainly with the scope of projects that we're looking at, it would be a lower amount. While we would have a reduction in our building aid as well, because that is linked directly to our debt service on these projects, we would benefit in our budget based on a net savings on our local share of the cost for that debt service. So when I have done the projections, I've assumed that we've kept that debt level. But in fact, we might have the ability to lower that going forward. So there's a whole variety of different things that we can do to try to preserve resources to keep us on an even keel financially. For our fund balance and reserves, this is probably very familiar to you now. This lists all the different types of restricted reserves that we have. And with an approximate surplus, I assumed $4 million, I had proposed these changes in the fund balance reserve amounts, that we put some more money into the ERS reserve, again, in anticipation of increasing rates, and also putting more money into the TRS reserve. We have the ability to add to the 2019 capital reserve that we had established last year. And with all of those fluctuations in the various elements of the reserves, we would need to keep our undesignated unrestricted fund balance at less than 4% of this $103 million budget, which would be the $4,139,000. We have been pushing very hard to try to get either a change in legislation or hoping for an executive or... for an executive order potentially to at least for this year, remove that 4% limitation on the undesignated fund balance. That would be something that would not entail any cost to the state, but what it would do is give us tremendous flexibility to weather these reductions that would likely be coming our way. If in fact, we have that ability to go above 4%, we would probably want to shift these funding amounts in these other reserves and just keep it in the undesignated reserve. I'm hoping to get more information on that, of course, in the coming weeks and will give you what the options are that are available to us at that time. The other reason that we're hoping to see that is that schools are unique and that we are the only local government where our board isn't able to decide what a reasonable unrestricted fund balance amount is. So I think that's another component in our favor perhaps, to get this flexibility in this coming year. So for the multi-year budget forecast, this is worse than it was last year. Obviously, we've had a change in the overall economy. It's not horrible, though. What I did change in terms of our assumptions is I did assume in those out years that we would have a 0% increase in our state aid numbers. That of course, could change. It could be lower, but hopefully, it would be a lower percentage overall. We've assumed salaries grow at 3% a year on our expenditures and that fringes are at about 46% of our salaries. It also, as I had mentioned earlier, does assume that our debt is kept at the same amount. Because we have such large amounts maturing with our debt, we do have the ability to control that. So if we were in a situation where our revenue sources dropped more than we anticipated, we could control that with an offset on our debt that is issued. This also, on this model, assumes that we're only increasing the levy at 2% per year. So yes, the deficits as we would go into our budget at the start of the review process is growing. However, it is still a relatively small percentage of our total and we do have the ability, of course, as you've seen, to modify the requests because at the end of the day, no matter what type of an economy we're dealing with, we do need to ultimately balance our Moving forward to the tax levy, of course, setting our levy at the 2.34% will generate revenues of $1,573,000 to the district, which is in accordance with our tax cap formulas. But that percentage does not translate directly into the tax rate that our residents pay and that is driven by the underlying assessed values within the communities of Bethlehem and New Scotland. And it's also affected by any changes in the equalization rate that is unique to each community. Based on the very preliminary totals that have come in from New Scotland and from Bethlehem, the EAC rate for Bethlehem is staying at 95% and the assessed values currently are up about $27 million from last year. So because of the flat equalization rate and because of that level of growth in the assessments, the tax rate for Bethlehem would be below the 2.34% and that is projected to be around 1.36%, which would be about $29 per 100,000. These numbers absolutely will change. The each town needs to go through their grievance process and there are additions and changes to the roles that the assessors are processing. As you may recall, of course, we're never setting these final rates until August, once we know what those totals are. For New Scotland, there is a reduction in their EAC rates from 92% to 91%. The overall assessed values have only gone up about $1 million, so that's why their percentage increase is slightly above the 2.34%. So I will update this as we get closer to the budget vote, as I get more current figures from the towns, but at least for now, those are what the impacts are looking like. The bus replacement proposition is also slated to be on the ballot and that was for six large buses and seven small buses at a cost not to exceed $1,210,000. And again, we need the approval from the board and from the community in order to make those purchases, but the cost for that does not change any of our budgeted figures that would be a future debt service cost for us that would be offset by repayments on older purchases of buses. We also will have the $100,000 capital outlay project that if the budget is approved, will cover a replacement of this elevator from 1979 that is in the middle school. So the budget vote will definitely not be on May 19th because of the latest executive order. As we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, it's going to be sometime after June 1st and we're presuming that all of the associated timelines for petitions and all of the other pre-budget statutory obligations, including our property tax report card adoption, is all being pushed forward. So once we get that date, we of course, will notify everybody. I believe the due date for the petitions is likely to change, but as of now, it is April 20th at 5:00. And we have three seats and three current board members who are running again for those seats for a three-year term. And then lastly, I should have put a giant "to be determined" on this. We are awaiting guidelines so that we can see what the timelines look like. The public hearing is prescribed to be a certain number of days prior to the actual budget vote, so if that's moving into June, the public hearing is probably going to move towards the end of May. But again, we will announce that when we have the information. So that concludes the budget overview. Are there any questions?
Judy, I have a question about the debt service. Do we ever refinance when the rates go down? Because the recent, you know, the Fed has dropped the rates three quarters of a point at this point.
Yes, we do do those refinancings in the municipal bond market. That's called a refunding. It was at the last meeting or the meeting before that where the board had just approved a refunding resolution upon the advice of our financial advisors. They too, were noting the drops in the market and had identified that we had a savings opportunity, would have generated about $10,000 per year in savings off of our debt service, but they are on hold almost within 48 hours after that resolution was approved by the board. The market was very volatile and they were not able to proceed with that. The authorization is in place. We can move forward if the market stabilizes and I will keep you updated on that when I hear more from them. But short answer, yes, we do refinance our bonds when there is a savings opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I had one other if nobody else wants to jump in, and that was regarding the fund balance.
Yes.
If the change in the law that we're looking at, that you're hoping comes through, does not come through, do we have other places we can put that money so that we're still in compliance and still have access to it?
Yes, so this slide shows where I would recommend the surplus be placed if that flexibility is not granted to us. And those increases, again, in the ERS and TRS reserves make perfect sense because we know those rates are going to be going up. The 2019 capital reserve, if we put the surplus in there, that reserve can go up as high as $10 million per the current authorizations. Between the 2015 reserve and the 2019 reserve, that is money well allocated, at $10.4 million going into the next capital project, which we anticipate would be smaller, you could potentially cover close to half of that project through reserves without having to issue debt. So these are all good places, legal places to put the money, but they don't give us the full flexibility that we would have to react to negative changes in our finances, which we would gain if we could exceed that 4% limitation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Judy, do we know when the governor is going to talk about like the looking at the budget and making possible changes in the budget? Like I've heard a little bit, but I don't know much.
My understanding is that they would be reviewing the state's finances on a quarterly basis. The state obtains quite a bit of money, both from their income tax and corporate tax payments, which do come into them quarterly in many cases. Also, their sales tax revenues, which are coming in regularly, but I believe those are officially measured at the quarterly mark. So as they do those interim financial reviews, that to me, would be the logical time that they would be making their decisions on whether they needed to reduce amounts of state aid to schools.
Does that, I know you're not psychic, but does that mean like July 1, we might get a update or September 1 or?
Well, the state's fiscal year starts April 1st, so yes, it could be as early as July that we get an indication, but we just frankly, don't know at this point. There is a whole range of economic forecasts as to, you know, do we rebound quickly once we're past this or is it a prolonged recession? Time will tell.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Judy, I have a question. It's Wendy.
Hi Wendy.
I might have heard some talk about pushing off due dates for property taxes and school taxes. Would that affect our budgeting in any way if that was to happen?
If the deadlines for paying school taxes were pushed to a later date, while it wouldn't affect the total amount that we receive, it would potentially affect our cash flow. Typically, we get all of our tax revenues in the September, October timeline in the beginning of our fiscal year in terms of the reopening of school. So if people had the opportunity to delay their taxes, most people I would think would take advantage of that, which could cause some cash flow concerns. Again, that's another reason to try to maintain some of these reserves. We do have the ability to use something called a tax anticipation note or a revenue anticipation note. Essentially, it's short-term financing. We have not had to use that in many years, so it would be my hope that that wouldn't shift too far, you know, to a later date so that we could hopefully avoid that. But again, another tool if that were to come to pass.
But there's a cost involved with that because it's refinancing.
Well, you're issuing debt, absolutely. So you would be paying interest on any money that you had to borrow and you would be losing interest on the tax dollars that you would ordinarily collect in the beginning of the school year. So it's a double whammy for the district if that were to happen.
Thank you Judy for your presentation. I know it's not easy to try to predict what's going to happen ever and particularly not right now. Before we move on, I just want to make sure nobody else has any additional questions Okay, next on the agenda is the time when we usually recognize visitors on an agenda item and we did receive a number of comments to the board ahead of time, so I will read those comments in now. First is a comment by Catherine Nadeau. "I'm writing to respond to the agenda item that will be considered at tonight's meeting titled 'Compensation During Declared Pandemic Emergency.' Given the ongoing nature of the crisis and the strong possibility that schools may remain closed past April 30th, I request that the board consider additionally, in the event that Governor Cuomo's executive order extends the closure past April 15th, it is recommended that the board extend their authorization through the new closure date, but not later than May 30th, 2020. Extending the authorization through May 30th, 2020 will give board-appointed staff a stronger sense of employment security in these uncertain times, something they both need and deserve. This extension will also allow the staff and board to continue normal operations."
Holly, we lost you, or at least I did.
I did too.
Got anybody else here, Holly?
No.
Okay, it looks like she left. Could Jody call her?
I'm thinking she's probably going to rejoin the meeting to see.
I'm thinking she might not be aware of she's continuing to read the messages.
I think she would have to rejoin Jonathan just because she can see that she won't see us.
Okay.
She just texted me that her computer's frozen. She's trying to get back on.
Well, I guess the vice president should take over now.
I don't have the comments with me, so I guess we'll have to wait for Holly.
I'll, I can text her too. She could join if she has it on her phone as well.
She texted me, just hold on a minute. She's trying to just reboot.
Okay.
I was, uh, really impressed, uh, with all the teachers this week. Um, and I really appreciated especially how the teachers who, um, aren't as versed in technology are dealing with this. I know some of our teachers already use Google Classroom and Seesaw and could jump right into this, but some of our teachers don't have that experience. Um, and I was really impressed how they jumped in and learned an entire new skill this week. Um, and managed especially a group of 20, you know, kindergarteners is really tough to deal with on Google Classroom and Google Meet. So thank you to all those teachers who learned some new skills this week.
And hi Holly.
Hi, I'm back. I apologize. I, my computer completely froze and I had to turn it all the way off and back on again. Um, hopefully that doesn't happen, but I suppose that's what happens sometimes when you're trying to have a virtual board meeting for the first time. Um, I think, I'm not sure where I left off. Did you hear me read the second comment from Joe Murphy?
No.
Okay. Um, so there was a, the second comment we received was from Joe Murphy asking, "What is the status of the School Bus Consultants' report to the Board on the purchase of electric school buses?" Uh, and Judy, I believe you have some information on that, if you're willing to share that.
Yes, we do not have the final School Bus Consultant report yet, but when we had spoken with them, they had reservations about proceeding down this path now, primarily from a fiscal standpoint. Even if you are able to get the NICERTA incentives that are out there, it still would be a net cost of close to $175,000 per bus, which is significantly more than what we're paying currently for our large buses. It's also, I think, unlikely that we would be getting those NICERTA grants because based on the information we have, those grants go to schools whose buses are really old and therefore emitting more, um, pollution into the atmosphere, so that is not our situation. So the full cost of these buses is closer to $300,000, so that's our ultimate exposure. The consultants had also noted that this is newer technology, and, um, per the material on that had been sent by Mr. Murphy, when I had reviewed that, I did note that, um, the city of White Plains is currently doing a pilot program for that where they are implementing, um, five electric buses within their fleet. And it was also noted that CDT A is currently doing a limited pilot program with the electric buses as well. So I think it would be really helpful for us to get feedback from those entities as to what their experiences were with it, both operationally in terms of the range that the buses can travel, what is the range differential perhaps in colder temperatures during the winter versus warmer times, spring, what have you? And, you know, the, uh, other infrastructure for charging of those buses, there are many other logistical things that would need to be considered with that as well. So, um, I believe when the final report comes from School Bus Consultants, we'll have more of that information in there, um, but I did want to share the preliminary word that we had from them on that.
Thank you, Judy.
Third comment that we have, um, it does not have a full name, but it says it comes from, um, Alex. "What is the plan to recover the lost learning from the children being at home? Has the board considered extending the school year into the summer? Does the district have an estimate cost and availability to install air conditioners into all the rooms to ensure children's safety? And if sports are canceled for the spring season, when school resumes, would the district test out the new later start time for high school?" Thank you. Uh, the next comment comes from Glenn Jeffers. "My name is Glenn Jeffers and I have a son in 11th grade and one in 8th grade. I'm writing to express my appreciation to the board administration, teachers, and all the support staff for what has been done to date regarding continuity of learning and concern for the well-being of all students. To me, it does seem that common sense is a key part in the district's plan, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for recognizing that we were originally being overwhelmed by individual emails from very well-meaning teachers and administrators. Thank you for delaying any new instruction until some additional thought has been given to that topic. Thank you for limiting grading to complete and incomplete. What I am asking for now is continued vigilance by the board as to the scope and pace of change from now to the end of the school year. Please remember that online learning is new for many teachers, students, and parents, caregivers. Please be vigilant about the pace of this new learning and how it is assessed. We went from the announcement regarding learn-at-home to implementation in less than one week. That is remarkably fast, and it will take some time to see where any gaps in our thinking are. Note that while we are receiving less direct communication from teachers, we are all adjusting to the new schedule of communications and the new pathways for them. At the high school level, there is a decreased but still high volume of individual emails and some uncertainty if individual teacher schedules will be consistent week to week or change week to week. I am also seeing signs of divergent expectations regarding what is to be accomplished as new learning and what amount of work is required to do this. Personally, I hope that BCSD stays with complete and incomplete for grading purposes, as it seems like the only equitable path forward. This virus is hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime event, and once-in-a-lifetime accommodations are required. Please resist the natural desire to conform to rules and policies that were not designed with this type of event in mind." And the final comment that we received, um, is from Wendy Detwiler. "As a parent of multiple children in the BCSD, I have major concerns over the content allowed through the school's internet filter. What is and can be done to further address this issue? Pornography and sexual addiction is very real and a huge issue in our society. I'm extremely concerned over the access that children can have while at school and in class on their school-issued Chromebooks, both on purpose and unintentionally. As a parent, my number-one concern is safety for my children. I have voiced this concern for years in our district to Jody Monroe, to the IT department, to school principals, yet five to six years later, this is still an ongoing problem. Many parents do not even realize their children have this access and unknowingly allow it to take place due to being unaware. At the very least, the school district needs to acknowledge they know about the situation and encourage parents to monitor their children's access. Parents on a whole are not being sent reports of their children's use. If you, as the district, are issuing the computers, then I feel it is your responsibility to monitor the computers and contact parents when use is appropriate. Teen years is when sexual addiction begins for most people. It is highly addictive and takes years of therapy and unlearning to change. Please take this problem seriously, especially now with kids at home with time and isolation to provide the opportunity. Please address internet safety and use." And, uh, Dave, I know we had had a conversation about the, um, filters on the Chromebooks that are going home, um, particularly that went home this week with the elementary school students, um, but if you had a minute to comment on that, that would be great.
Sure, so, um, all of the Chromebooks are managed, um, by the district. What that means is you can only log into the Chromebooks if you have an @BethlehemSchools account. Um, once you're in the Chromebooks, you're not able to install anything that hasn't already been approved by the district or pushed out by the district. Um, and then, once you are utilizing the Chromebook, um, it actually gets filtered back through to the, the district. So it does go through our dual firewall and through our filtering system as if you were on campus. So it doesn't matter if you're at home, at, um, a restaurant using their Wi-Fi, or in the district, it still goes through our firewall, it still goes through our filtering system. Um, that being said, um, not all, um, filters are gonna catch everything, which is why our IT department spends a good deal of the time reviewing, um, usage logs to see if things are getting through that should not, and then they, um, block those sites as well. Um, but the, the bottom line is, and I think Ms. Monroe communicated this pretty well with her, um, communications in terms of schooling at home, is that there is no substitute for, you know, supervision. Um, to allow students to just take these devices and go off into another room with no supervision, thinking that they're not going to be able to find ways around filters or, um, you know, haphazardly stumble upon things is naive. So as much as we can put in place, um, we are doing that, but at the same time, yes, we do urge parents to keep an eye on what their students are doing, uh, because no filter can filter out everything for sure.
Thanks, Dave. Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes. Uh, next would be, uh, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item, um, but I previously read all of the comments that we received before the meeting, uh, into the record. Item eight, future meetings and events. Um, Monday, April 6th, um, are you still planning to have a facilities committee meeting?
Um, we're planning to have, have it, but we have, I'm assuming it's going to be held in the same way this meeting or the executive session was held. Is that correct, Jody or Judy?
Yes, uh, Brittany, I think, is gonna send out, or will, has either sent it or will send out a Google Meet for that.
Yeah, an invite should have been sent to the committee members already. It's on your calendar for Monday at 5:45.
Yep.
Brittany, will we be able to see the, the sheets, um, as we're seeing the board agenda now?
I need to touch base with Greg Nolte. He'll be the one that's running the meeting as, obviously, he's the facilities guy, so I'm gonna touch base with him tomorrow, and if I need to be sitting in to assist, I can do that for you guys.
Okay, I think it would be helpful because otherwise, um, I'm not sure we'll be able to get, I'll be able to get them up on the same screen.
Okay.
Well, we could, Brittany, you could just forward it to us so we have it.
Yeah, we'll make sure all of the materials are ahead of time to review, um.
And we should be able to share that screen similarly to how we shared the budget presentation this evening.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Our next board meeting, um, is scheduled, uh, April 22nd, uh, at 7:00 PM, anticipating an executive session at 6:00 PM. Um, at the moment, it is scheduled to be at the cafeteria, but that is obviously subject to change. Um, same with the following meeting, um, which is Wednesday, May 6th. Um, and on the calendar is the budget hearing, but as Judy mentioned, presumably it will not be, that's gonna be getting pushed off. Um, so we will have a regular board meeting and, um, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. Um, and Wednesday, May 13th is on the calendar, um, for meet-the-candidate night, but that also presumably would be pushed back. Um, so I guess on those, um, both location and, um, uh, and agenda and time, we will, uh, deal with them as they know what's going on.
Before we end, Holly, just when you, when you cut out, you had read the first comment during the visitor session, and I didn't know if Jody wanted to comment on that with pushing out the date to May 30th or why we had the date, um, to April 30th.
Sure, I can do that. So the reason we use the date of April 30th is because the governor's closure currently is through April 15th. Um, in the likely event that the closure gets extended, we don't have another board meeting till April 22nd. So that's why we put the April 30th date, knowing that we had an April 22nd board meeting that at that time, we could do another action item to extend it further based on whatever the governor's order would be at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no need to go back into executive session. Uh, may I, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.